Sorry, it's my, put on my watch, it's 6:32. And so we will go ahead and get started. Today is the 25th of May, Thursday, and it's the Northwoodby Park and Recreation District Board of Commissioners meeting. All members are present. First, on the agenda. Show us the right minutes. Agenda changes. I'm going to add a change to unfinished business. We need to talk about the ballot title. I found out something about that today, and we need to talk about it. So that's going to be added to unfinished business at the end. All right. Commissioner Frost, do you have any changes to the agenda you wish to make?
I do not have any changes.
Commissioner Singleton? Commissioner Fort?
No.
Commissioner Hoffmeyer?
No.
Alrighty. Public comments, no one signed up. Board issues. Commissioner Hoffmeyer?
Not tonight.
Nothing.
Commissioner Singleton? No. No questions? I have nothing. Approval of minutes. First, I would like to say a big thank you to Commissioner Fort, who has done all of his minutes. Excellent job. Thank you, sir.
Reluctantly.
And then shame on the rest of us who have not, we need, we all need to get minutes done. Commissioner Hoffmeyer, you have four sets, two of which are really, they're together. So you have kind of three. Commissioner Singleton has three, Commissioner Frost has three, and I have two. I am deeply sorry and ashamed. So, I would like commitments, please, from everybody. We've got to get these minutes done. Can we at least commit to each of us getting at least one set done by the next meeting? Meaning, that you have to have them done by the, like, Thursday, the 20th, get them to admin Friday, the 21st of, I'm sorry, 15, 16 of June. So if you get, if you get them done Thursday, the 15th, send them to admin on Friday, the 16th, she can send them out to all of us, we can review them, and we'll get four sets done. Can we all commit to that? I can.
I think so.
Okay. Especially, you guys, those November meetings are so critical, because remember, there's no, if you need notes from the people who attended, just ask them. I unfortunately didn't go to either meeting, but the people with notes, you might need them, because there are no recorded minutes for those meetings. But please, 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 we've got to get those done, and we've got to get these minutes done. Thanks. Okay. Voucher review.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Do you have minutes for approval?
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. Thank you. You're right. I just talked about them. So we do have minutes for review, thank you. Does anyone want to make a motion on the minutes that we saw from Commissioner Fort?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Singleton?
I move that we approve the minutes from the April 26 special meeting.
As written?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Does anyone second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes from the April 26 special meeting as written. Discussion. I have a comment. We usually try and use civilian time, Doc, and so I would just change that 1900 hours to 7:00 PM, and adjourned at the bottom to 8:37, if you don't mind.
So 700 PM?
No, 7:00 PM.
Seven?
Seven, little P, period, M, period.
7:00 PM, M.
And down at the bottom, eight, yeah, adjourned at 8:37.
P, okay. PM.
Yeah.
Okay, dope.
That was the only comment that I had. Anybody else? Okay. Can we have a modification of the motion to include the correction made?
Sir, I move that we amend the motion to include the time corrections.
Thank you. Second? On the amendment?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the April 26 special meeting minutes as written with the time change. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What is?
Siegel.
Oh. Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Unanimously approved. Thank you very much.
He would've got me if that glass wasn't there. Siegel just dropped something.
Right into your soda.
Is there a window open?
Yeah, skylight. Siegel took a load right off.
Okay, voucher review. Do we have a motion on the vouchers?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Singleton?
I move that we approve expense vouchers 7522 through 7561, the amount of $23,550.86, and conduct payroll transfer to the MNO account in the amount of, or did I say that right? From MNO account to payroll account in the amount of $42,122.31.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that district vouchers number 7522 through 7561, in the amount of $23,550.86, and the payroll transfer from MNO account to payroll account of $42,122.31 be approved.
For a total of, do we have to put that in there, or no?
Uh, we don't, we don't have to, because it's not on there. Discussion. Commissioner Hoffmeyer, do you have any questions?
No.
Mr. Fort? Seems that I had a couple. Okay, explain to me, the clean water utility, is that going to be a monthly fee of $40 times three?
No.
Or that's the annual fee?
Annual.
Okay. And it's for the Clover Valley Park and the pool building?
And the lot that we're going to request.
And so now it's cost us money, $40 a year, that piece of property that we're not even sure about. Okay.
What's this hook, Chris? There's a, in one of the subdivisions, there is a lot that didn't perk back when they had it perked. I don't know, it may have city water now, and maybe, I don't know.
Well, that would be a good thing to find out.
We need to, yeah, let's look into that. Anyway, it's, somebody donated it to us, and we didn't pay for it at all, right? It was donated to us?
They paid a dollar.
Oh, we paid a dollar. It's, it's on the boards as worth $5,000 or something, but if it ever, if they ever get city water, they can actually build on it, we could sell it. So, anyway. The Fidalgo, okay, so also on the voucher report, Fidalgo Pool and Fitness Center, there was a Red Cross Deluxe LGI Kit for Jessica.
Yes.
So what exactly is that? I didn't understand.
So, that is a Fidalgo, Fidalgo bought a bunch of life art courses, books, and they got them reduced rate, and they offered Jessica some of them, and so she comes home, they're reduced rate.
Perfect. Okay. And so we'll use them in our coursework. Okay. Fabulous. Okay, that was all the questions I had. Did you have anything, Commissioner Singleton? Commissioner Frost, anything? All right, it's been moved and seconded that we approve district vouchers number 7522 through 7561, in the amount of $23,550.86, and the payroll transfer from MNO account to payroll account of $42,122.31 be approved. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye unanimously approved. Committee reports. Clover Valley?
We did not have a meeting this month, but I'd like to propose a meeting on the 14th of June to discuss the table placement and the building of the pavilion, and some other little projects that we have going on. Time to be determined, whatever the subcommittee wants to meet. I suggest 4:30 to 5:30.
I can support that.
I believe so.
I believe I can do that. So, we want to do 4:30 or?
Five.
Five?
Five o'clock.
And I also gave the executive director the names for the people at Les Schwab, for you to do the letter of appreciation for building the tires for the park, and also a letter for a person that I work with to build the building, to make sure that there's no legal issues, or anybody is going to bring anything up. So, this is to build the extra shelter.
Right.
Or about tree line that we discussed. They were just worried about laws or code jurors.
Oh, no, very smart. Okay. Good. So we look forward to hearing next month how that went. Program review. Program review committee did not meet the levy subcommittee?
Two things on that. Mr. Steve Prosser, oh, Mr. Steve Prosser got the Save Our Pool website up, and we'll be updating it to the current levy. And you can go on through the website. I don't, I don't, can you tell everybody what the website is?
ParksAndPool.org, or SaveThePool.org, they're both going to be directed to the same site.
Okay.
But I would, I think we ought to go to Parks and Pool, probably, we should put out, but that's, we can just discuss that.
Yeah.
And the other thing is, the tax assessor and the ED estimates that the, with the 17 cents per thousand levy rate for 2018, we can, we can expect to receive up to $674,000 from the levy for 2018 compared to what we received this year, about $579,000, or more than $90,000 more than, from the levy in 2018 than we've got this year. And this, I guess, is because of the increased property assessments and plus new construction.
Can I address that, sir?
Mm-hmm.
So, I just got a mail from her today, and in your packet, there should be in your packet an updated copy of what, that levy information.
Mm-hmm.
They lowered it down to 7% increase, so it actually brings it down to 656,000. That is not what we're going to get, because there are going to be people that appeal, there'll be people that don't pay, but if we were to get, by some stroke of luck, we got every credit for everything out there that's taxable, that's what we could get. We won't get that.
Okay.
But, anyway.
But in any case, it'll be an increase, considerable increase over compared to what we got this year.
Yes, sir.
The good news is, it's not going down.
That's correct.
But that, and that's only if the levy passes.
Correct.
And we get levy money. Okay. Is that all? Commissioner Fort?
Nothing else.
Okay. Action item review.
Okay, so I did get the information from Commissioner Frost for Les Schwab, and for Mr. Minnie to build the pavilion, and for the tires out there, so I'll get that done this next week, and get those letters to you, so you can deliver, or if you want me to come deliver them to Les Schwab, which I'll be glad to do that.
Okay.
And the one to Christopher Minnie, since he works with it, I'll let you.
Yeah, I'll just, if you just, I'll just grab it from you, and since he works with it, I'll do it.
Okay. Here, should be here this next month or so, and the next one is to explore the options for the liability insurance for, you know, CIAW. That should start happening this next month, whenever the brokerage begins preparation for it, and so, I know we've been waiting on that. So, guess who's with me tonight? Matt. Well, the next one was have Matt inquire into the use of an ozinator versus the UV system, while he is at the CPO force. And as you know, one of our vendors, Sesko, Sesko had an offer for him to go take a class sooner and at a cheaper rate, so he went. So, I'll let you address the UV versus the ozinator.
All right. Woo! Sweet, I'm spot. All right, y'all, I guess, want to find out what's the difference between an ozinator and the UV system. They both, they both do the same thing, per se, but as we're at right now, I also found out that our UV system, even if it was completely 100% operational, is inadequate for the actual water and patron usage we have. So that's one problem with it. Go back to the differences. The ozinator doesn't kill as much bacteria as the UV system. The UV system kills more bacteria faster. So that's, that is, that's pretty much the difference of them. They're similar in the, in the kind of constructions and stuff, but our best bet would be to go, you know, stay with the UV system. So one thing, what I read on, was that the ozinator has a extent, the UV is only works when it comes in contact with the water that's passing through it for a few seconds. The ozinator hasn't, gets into the water and actually stays in the pool water for a period of time, so it's continuing to work supposedly. No, they're both the same thing. The water actually has to be in contact.
Right, but the ozinator is, it ozonates the water, so the ozone stays in the water that goes into the pool, so it stays in contact for longer.
It's not, it's not the same.
Okay.
It, like I was saying, the UV system protects better, I guess, you know, for your, for all this stuff. The ozinator, it does work, and like I said, it works about the same as we are right now in the UV system.
Which one would be cheaper?
Well, you've got to think, if we already have, well, we've got to replace everything.
Yeah.
Can I ask, did you, I thought I heard you say the UV system is inadequate for the people and the amount of water we have. Did you say that?
Yes, yes, I did.
So we need to get?
A bigger one.
A bigger one.
Instead of six bulbs and stuff, we need at least 12, for the amount of water.
Okay.
And the amount of foot traffic.
So we don't know the cost comparison between the two yet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that mean, did we buy the incorrect thing, or is it just, okay? I, I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to understand.
When, when it was purchased, it was whoever sold it.
It was inadequate?
It was inadequate, yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
And that pretty much led to the demise of ours.
So you recommend the UV system be upgraded?
Yes.
Okay.
Does it make those costs the same, or is it going to be different between two systems? As in, okay, UV, you've got to surface it every so often?
You've got to surface, the ozinator, you've got to, you've got to service, the ozinator actually probably more surface than the UV system.
Is it a fair assumption, sorry, Matt, I, I think I felt like you were, you were perhaps indicating this, but is it a fair assumption then, than part of, so the concern from some people is, well, but it didn't work well, and it was super expensive, and it doesn't do that well, is that because of the fact that we have an inadequate model? Sorry, I'm having a hard time saying that.
Yeah.
Okay. So, so it cost us more, unfortunately, because we have the wrong system?
True point, yeah.
I mean, okay. Thanks.
Do you know how much the upgraded UV system would be?
It's about 25, 26 grand, is what it would be.
I do remember seeing that in the, it's in the maintenance plan, isn't it?
I don't have a price for it anymore. But the good news is, is we get the water tested eight times a year, and it always passes with no chloroforms or anything in it, so it's not like it's an urgent thing to have to get done, ahead of other things that we want to do maintenance wise, so that's my opinion.
So, the water is, in fact, completely safe to swim in.
Oh, yes.
It's just that, if you want better treatment of it, go, okay. All right, so I guess we will talk about this when we get to the comprehensive maintenance plan, then, I think. All right. So, anyone have any other questions for Matt about this specific issue? Okay.
These are still in work, breaking out the security and the service following the P and L, that'll be done in the year revision. Maybe they'll get that, if they want, prior to that, but won't have an amount of cash, you know, a budget amount. And then, I'm still also, we're looking at other options, which is looking at the other option, I'm looking at another option, there are any cheaper options out there that never bring security to do that, or security for, so that's still in work. That's it.
Okay, NWA contract motion.
So, each of you should have something in your packet, there's a set of slides that I put in there. So, back in '84, the NWA stood up to meet the needs of the community, the operating model that's been worked, that's been used for, hasn't changed since then. And so, the current board of commissioners has determined that it needs an operating model that makes it sustainable, and that this current model is unsustainable for the cost. So I was asked at the last regular meeting to work with families to see if we could come up with a more, with an option that's going forward, that would make it, or a business model that would make the NWA self-sufficient. So, the, I've met with them many times, and the following proposed changes to the operating model will go into effect in September, pending board approval and probably a few other things. But I did meet with family reps and discuss several models, and each has their own merits. The plan that we kept coming back to was just to go adopt the Fidalgo model, the way the TAC does it up there, in Anportis. So what that, what that means is the NWA would still continue to be a district program, however responsibilities now would be divided amongst the district, or then the boosters club, whatever that become, has to become for them to do this in that way. So I have BHBC in there, but I don't think that it'll, it may go forward as a different org structure with the same name, but whatever it becomes, that's what it'll be. So, following the Anportis model, the district is responsible for hiring a head coach, which I'll call just head coach from now on, and he'll be a district employee reporting to the executive director. In conjunction with the boosters club, the terms of this contract will be determined, and that's because we don't want to bring someone in that's, you know, $80,000 a year, it's not sustainable for what they're trying to do, you know? So, it's not that, we want to make sure that we're bringing someone in that doesn't close the model off from a cost perspective, that still has all the right requisite experience and qualifications. We ensure the, we make sure that the coach has all the requisite certs and quals, including keep them current. We make sure that we work with whatever the boosters club becomes to make sure that the team roster is accurate. Any assistant or deck coaches that may eventually have to be hired, as the team grows, would be hired by the district, they'd be district employees, and we'd do the same thing, would make sure that all the quals are kept, and then, of course, provide them with the clean, safe environment to do it. For the boosters club, following the same Anportis model, they would be, they'd be responsible for determining what structure they have to have, what sort of, how they have to restructure their organization, or start a new one, or whatever. They would be responsible, then, basically, they would own almost everything at that point, determining the fees, and the rules for swimmers, the NWA or the masters, provide the same opportunity for the outreach swimmers that we have on the team, and any other future ones that come down. And they would pick up off of the NWPR and P and L related to NWA, they would pick up all the expense line items. So that's the coaches' travel, all me host expenses, the team unify software, and the organizational memberships and registrations that need to be paid to Pacific Northwest, meet fees to other clubs, arranging, volunteer support, and then, of course, any accessories. I mean, they basically picked up, I just took the line items that were on the P and L and put them in here, that's what I did. Plus, compensation for the coach and any assistant deck coaches, and that was my compensation, I'm talking about the total compensation package, and anything that's not covered by other revenue generating activities that the coach might do. So, and that, the next slide, let's see what I'm talking about. Coach will be a district employee, and I did discuss that with CIAW, and that's the better option, is to have him a district employee. He, again, keeps, he'll keep the team records current with all the applicable organizations. He'll coordinate with the staff, me and Aquatics, on use of the pool and all the stuff that he does already anyway. He would be responsible for hiring any assistant or deck coaches as required. I'm giving to him the administration of the Oak Harbor High School contract, the swim team contract, so although I'll sign the contract each year, he'll be the one responsible for executing it, administering it. Any other duties, he still have any other duties that are in the employee manual, and then, as we are able to find other revenue generating duties for him, then, as assigned by me, then he would get those. So the next page, you can sort of see there's a compensation cover tomorrow that we looked at. It's in five columns for a reason. The first column is tied to our fiscal year, and so September through December. So, one-third of the entire 61, six of his compensation comes to 20.5, less half, we would get about half of the high school contract, which is about 3,700. This year, the high school contract goes up to 7,400. And so the balance to the booster club, or whatever they become, I'm just going to keep saying booster club, I mean, I think you understand what I mean. Is 16,8, less anticipated dues in that period, means their coverage for that four-month period is about $4,300. Just what they'll have to figure out how to come up with. Then I took January and August intentionally, so that I could then line them up, so it would marry the swim, normal swim season, which is what the high school starts with. So January to August, that's two-thirds of his salary, less the other half of the swim contract, leaves the balance of 37. Anticipated dues, and then that leaves him $12,000 and some change to cover. And then starting, the next column, the next three columns start with the September to August, of 2018 to 19, 19 to 20, and 20 to 21. And 18, 19, the difference there is the high school contract now goes up again to 7,700, which lowers the, what balanced in for the swim team goes to 50, because now this is a full 12-month period, not just a four and an eight-month period. 37 or so in dues leaves him 13,000 to come up with, and then, the next two years basically are the same, because that's whenever the Oak Harbor High School contract reaches about its peak. I mean, it'll change based on minor variations each year, but it comes to there, to about 13,000, which brings the balance as, I mean, if there are no other activities added, down to 13,5, or down to 48,000. Dues for a year are about 37, 38,000, and then about 10,000 a year after that. So, there's, I have a note down there, these numbers are based on 2017's budget numbers right now. They don't collect, they don't reflect any salary increase for the coach that may come down the road, nor do they reflect any revenue increase generated from the growth of the swim team, so that would be the dues received line there. As the team grows, the dues will go up, and the amount that they have to figure out how to cover becomes less. Nor, if I have, if I'm able to find other things for the coach to do, clinics, things like that, as we go along, so that, that would also, is not reflected in here, because we're not ready to get to that. So, that, that is, in discussion with the parents, this is something they feel they can work with. So, the next steps, I see it here, are for the, pending approval of the board here, this is a good, a straw man to go for. These aren't details, but the details come next. But it would be for them to determine what their organizational structure needs to be, and their intention is to do everything they can to make it ready to go September 1st. And then, after meeting with them in the next month, hopefully have a draft resolution with a, with a draft letter of agreement at the next meeting, which if all that's adopted and approved by the board, then we would send it to a legal review on our side, and they would do the same from their side, to, they would find a, you know, they would find a, CIAW will also look at it for us as well. So, and then, if, I mean, if it goes like it should, without any special meetings being required, my plan would be at the July meeting, the regular meeting in July, that it becomes adopted as a resolution. And that's, that's an overarching straw man of it, the rest of it becomes details that have to be worked out. have to be worked out.
Commissioner Ford?
So the Oak Harbor High School contract value goes to the Blue Herring Club?
No, it comes to us. It just gets reduced from, it gets reduced as a liability for the coach's salary.
You stated it correctly, Commissioner Ford, I believe.
So the, the high school would no longer be paying any lane hour use fee that would be paid to the coach?
No, the coach will administer that contract.
But you're counting that towards his reduced salary? That whole $3,700?
Yes.
So the, the pool is getting nothing for it?
No, the pool gets, we get the money.
We get the money, but we don't get any lane time hours out of that. We're not getting compensated anything for lane time hours. If it goes to the coach, then we're getting nothing for the lane time hour use.
I don't know how you figure that out. We did a contract, we did an agreement with them to grow this up to where they finally get to where they're paying us for everything over a four-year period.
They're paying it all to the coach. It all goes to the, to the coach.
Well, that's what the Anacortes contract does for the, Jason doesn't coach their team, by the way. He administers the contract and takes care of it, and it goes, it's ready.
He, he doesn't administer the contract, he actually coaches the team.
No, he doesn't. I went up and talked to Marilyn, I know, I know what their model is up there. They do not. I'm doing, I'm following their model to a T. There is no difference. He does not coach their team.
And the other things the coach to do, are there going to be revenues that, or just something to reduce the coach's salary costs?
Yes, yes. If he picks up a week clinic that brings in $1,200, well that's $1,200 less revenue, that's $1,200 more revenue toward paying his compensation package that would not have to be picked up by the families. I'm following the Anacortes model to a T.
Do we have a motion on this business model from any of the commissioners? It's okay.
Will we call recess for a minute until we get, uh?
No, he said he, he said he would have to go, his, his dog is undergoing surgery. I mean, is he still out there or?
I see him around the corner, yeah.
All right, tell you what, we'll take a 10-minute recess, 19, or sorry, 7:04, recessing for 10 minutes, and then we will come back to this. Okay. Coming back into order at 7:10, since everyone's back in place. And so I had asked, are there any motions on the operating model as presented by the director?
Yeah, I have a couple questions for Max.
Well, really, are we not supposed to have a motion before we can talk about stuff?
I thought so, but we have.
I know, I know.
That's why, I mean, we already had a little question or two, that's why.
All right, go ahead and ask your questions.
I guess a couple questions are, you know, I've talked with Jason up there and Marilyn over the last couple of years, you know, because there's, there's been a lot of talk over the last couple of years of moving to the Fidalgo's model. So I wanted to find out exactly what that was and, you know, this, this is, you know, I tried to explain that this is how they do it up there, not as well as you did on paper here. So it kind of makes sense to me. So I guess you've explained that. It seems like the two programs are pretty well tied together and, you know, when, when Amy Merkley, the high school swim coach, showed up at the last meeting, you know, I mean, she certainly seemed to tie the two programs together. So that, is that kind of why you think the Fidalgo has them together, or what are, what are the advantages of having those two together like Marilyn does?
Well, there is a tie-in and there, there, between them because they feed each other. I mean, we have, the Harb, the high school swim team is made up, I will say predominantly of either current or former N WAC swimmers. And the N WAC right now, we probably have five, maybe five that were high school swimmers that are currently on there. I mean, because we have a lot of junior kids that'll grow up and go into it.
When, when Coach Amy said that, you know, she felt that without N WAC there wouldn't be a high school swim team here, as she's seen on the district, you think that's probably after the center?
Well, I'll have to trust her judgment on that. I could see it not being the, the program that it is now perhaps, but yeah, that's, I'm not in a position to know all their ins and outs.
I've just had a piece together of what I heard from Marilyn and Jason and what Amy said at our meeting at the senior center and then what I see here. And, you know, I certainly think this is a, from, you know, I almost feel bad supporting this in a way because I support how it is now. You know, however, I do think from what I've heard over the last couple of years that this is, this is multiple steps towards what the majority of this board wanted. And I guess, you know, from here, maybe we have to take it forward to see a contract, to see if that's something we like. So I would be ready to make a motion that we accept the executive director's, you know, business model here.
Okay, so I have a motion to accept the proposed N WAC business operating model as presented by the director?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we accept the N WAC business operating model as presented by the director. And so, do you have any other just points to discuss?
You know, I think really from here, I think we got to pass this to get a contract to keep moving ahead because the clock's ticking, obviously.
Okay. Commissioner Ford?
Yeah, coach's compensation 2017, he's only making $20,542?
No, in that one, for the last four months of the year, that would be his pro rate number, salary. Because that's September through December.
And then, well then January to August, it's 41?
Yeah, that's two-thirds of a year. I did it that way so that, starting in the 2018-19 season, I could marry him up to the, to the normal swim season and the high school swim season.
And that's the, that's the total benefit package?
Yes, that's 61-6-2-6.
And then balance to Blue Hair, what, uh, let's see. So what if the, if what if the number of swimmers and dues don't go up compared to what you, you figured here?
I'm not sure.
Well, I mean, you're saying, you're saying less, I mean, there's less dues received?
Yeah, minus, minus dues received.
Let's say they don't go up to?
Well, if they don't, if they don't grow the team and they don't get more people, then the number in the estimated coverage line stays higher. And then becomes the obligation that they have to keep.
That's what I was going to ask, because there is.
Okay, sorry, Commissioner Ford speaking, we're trying to be good people.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
No, sorry? Wait for your second time round. Write down what you're going to ask.
I was just piggybacking on his, myself.
I know, but if we do that, then we get really.
Agreed.
Okay, have you finished, Commissioner Ford?
I've done, yeah.
Okay. And I'm fine with all this except the whole, we pay you a lot of money a year. Your responsibility is that Oak Harbor High School contract. You're the one who worked it. No, you are not going to give away the money. And I know it's not given away, but it is. You are giving away the value of that to N WAC. No.
How am I getting away?
No, you are, because you are then paying the swim coach to do something that's your job. It is your job. So the answer's no.
Well, then I'm asking for a vote on that.
I know. I'm just telling you, it's like, as far as I'm concerned, no, we are not going to give up revenue, which that's exactly what it is. We're giving up the Oak Harbor High School revenue that is brought in by your work, and just because you are labeling, oh, the coach's duties, it's like, no, it's not. It's your job. So I would say you need to find out a different way to make that money up, and I would guess it's going to be in dues received. That's, otherwise it's fine. And the other, we'll have to talk about that, other revenue generating duties as assigned by the, it's like, well, okay, if he has a swim club, are we going to also take into account how much would be the potential, you know, what's the, the cost of having normal swim things if there's a swim camp or whatever? And I would say, yes, you have to, but I'm not averse to that. I am averse to giving up the Oak Harbor High School swim revenue. That's my thought. And so Commissioner Singleton?
I guess first, just in terms of the comment that the operating model hasn't changed, I would disagree with that. And we heard from a person in this community who swam on the team as a kid, who's now county commissioner, who has said otherwise. So just, I mean, just the, the fallacy that it's been exactly this way all the time isn't accurate. And so I just, I just wanted to point that out. I do happen to agree with the, basically the reduction, you know, I, I, rather I should say it a different way, I do not agree with the reduction based on a contract that we already have signed. I just, I don't, that may be the way that, that Fidalgo does it, I just, I don't, I don't agree with it though. And I think, I think given that one of our, our goals was to reinstate public trust, I actually personally don't think it helps us achieve that objective. It feels, I, I think it was creative, I just can't support it. And I feel like it looks to me like, and I know this term is overused right now, but it feels to me like a false equivalency and I, I, a false equivalency, that it's, I mean, that we're deriving this much benefit based on that work, essentially we're deriving that benefit from the contract, and in many cases, it's also based on actual costs to the pool. And so, and so I think by saying, well, it reduces, it reduces this burden over here, we actually have part of that, there is a burden that time that's, that's used by that team. So for me, that's, I, I, I can't support that. And I guess lastly, I would just say, with lots of, of just time to ruminate on this over the past month, I'll just say, I just don't actually believe that we should be in this business in terms of, I don't believe that this district should be in, in the business of, of having a competitive swim team. That's, that's my opinion. So for that reason as well, I, I have a, a problem with it. So that's my feedback.
Commissioner Frosch?
I like it, that's all.
Commissioner Hoffmeyer?
The, the comment about time to ruminate over the last month, you know, I, the reason I got on this board two years ago is because I realized that there were people that felt that way. But that's enough of that. You know, I think, I, I feel like for two years, we've told the director, Anacortes, 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 this is what Anacortes does and, you know, much like, I think it was two meetings ago here, when we had the M and O leveling coverage thing, you know, there were several things in there that I didn't support, that I went ahead and went for. You know, in the grand scheme of things, you know, we're looking January to August 18, I don't, I don't see any reason we don't move ahead over $3,740.40. You know, November's coming up and we'll see what the new board, you know, wants to do and what that composition is, I have no clue, obviously. But I really personally feel like this is what a majority of the board has wanted and I feel like it's the best step at this point. I mean, if, if we're unable to instruct the director, you know, as we said, he makes a lot of money, and the five of us commissioners combined make zero cents. So I really think that if we don't let him move ahead with this, I don't know where we go from here and we're not able to meet anybody's timeline and November has passed us and so have our chances that things look in, like we're moving in a direction that the majority of this board feels that people want us to move. So I, like I said, I proposed the motion and I still support it, and that's really all I have right now.
Commissioner Ford?
So are you willing to take a $3,700 cut pay for reduced responsibilities?
If you ask me a serious question, Commissioner, I'll be glad to respond.
Okay. No further questions?
I have no further comments? Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the N WAC business operating model as presented by the director. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Nay. Vote is three to two against. So I will go by voice. Commissioner Frosch?
Aye.
Commissioner Singleton?
Nay.
Commissioner Ford?
Nay.
Commissioner Hoffmeyer?
Aye.
End of chair votes nay. It does not pass.
Not just.
Commissioner Singleton?
I move that we dissolve the Northwood Beach Aquatic Club effective August 15, 2017.
Do I have a second?
Second.
You're a horrible person. You're a bad person.
You may, you may be quiet.
You're a bad person too. No, you're both bad people. Doc, you're better than this. No, you're not. You are not.
Be quiet and sit down.
No.
Then leave.
Why?
Because you need to sit down and not disrupt the meeting. We're doing business.
This is what we wanted all along, you did go walk this way.
Okay, be quiet until you're, yes.
No, no.
You need to leave.
You need to leave.
No, you are not good people.
You need to leave. If you are not going to stop disrupting the meeting, you need to leave.
You are not good people and you hate children. Why are you here?
You need to leave.
Why are you here?
Someone, okay. We are recessed at 7:23, so I can call the police to have you removed.
Why are you here? Why are you here? You're both bad people and this is what you've wanted all along. You have let down your friends, they are so heartbroken.
Meeting resuming at 7:32 PM.
Can I propose?
After the police, no, you can't. After the police came because Mr. Hoffmeyer was disrupting us. All right, no, we have a motion on the floor.
We do, and it's been seconded, and I would like to propose a, a change to that.
I wanted to get the wording of the motion, then you may, then it's, you can have your discussion first. What was the, tell me again the wording of your motion, please?
Dissolve the Northwood Beach Aquatic Club effective August 15, 2017.
Which date was the date, sorry?
August 15.
August 15, 2017. Okay. All right, it has moved to a second. So Commissioner Hoffmeyer?
Yeah, you know, I think if, if we're following our normal policy, there is no way we can vote on something like this without it being on the agenda. There's, there's no way. It'll get called back like other stuff we've done. So I would propose that, that we make that part of our next regular board meeting agenda.
No, I'm sure.
Commissioner Singleton?
Because this has been an ongoing topic, I just, I actually, I disagree with you. I mean, I, I disagree with you.
It's not ongoing.
So it is actually.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
No, it's not.
I want a contract motion, it is.
That doesn't say nothing to do with the dissolution of a club.
But the original motion did. The original motion said.
The original motion failed. This isn't a carryover. This is something totally different.
I'm talking about the original motion that led to this.
Yeah, but that failed. This is, this is total new direction for the director that we came up one or two meetings ago.
It didn't, it didn't fail, it was, it was rescinded, but I mean, the discussion is ongoing.
This wasn't the motion that was rescinded, that was, that was the, that was the rescension of a resolution from, from the early 2000s.
We never voted on my original, I'm sorry, but I, I'm being recognized.
No, I'm sorry, you're correct.
Sorry, but the original, the original motion was rescinded.
But this is, this is not a carryover. If this is something we're going to do, we need to put it on next month's agenda. I mean, if, if we're aware of how close August is, we can't have it appear as if we're trying to hide something like that from the public.
I, I think everybody knows that we're having these discussions.
We told the director. We told the director to move ahead with the Anacortes model, and he's done that, and now we reject it.
No, we didn't, no, we didn't. We asked him to bring alternatives.
That's what's been said for two years, is Anacortes.
I, I had no idea what he was coming up with, so that, there's, there's absolutely no way that that was the expectation of the entire board.
Well, that's, that's enough of that, I just, I, I really think we need to get this on the next regular board meeting, and if we feel we need to schedule a special meeting to get it out of the way sooner, then let's do that. But the public has to have a chance to be here.
They do have a chance to be here.
Not with that, they didn't know what was on here. It wasn't on the agenda.
And what contract motion is on the agenda?
Not rescind, not, not dissolution of NWA. Nowhere in NWA contract proposal could anybody pull the dissolution of it out of there.
That's what the original motion included. I, I, I mean, I, I don't, I personally don't.
This isn't the original motion. This isn't the original motion.
Okay, Commissioner Singleton, do you, you are not gonna change your motion, correct? Okay. So do you have a different point to make?
Well.
Commissioner Fort, wait. Commissioner Hoffmeyer, do you have anything else to say?
I think if we can have a special meeting next week, I mean, he keeps bringing up this August deadline, the longer we put this off, the closer, the more and more they can say, oh, we just didn't give them enough time. So if, if we can have a special meeting on this in, in the next week.
Do you wanna have a special meeting? You think we need to? Okay.
Technically, I don't know. I don't, I don't know the legal grounds here, I've never been on it, political.
It's not a legal, it's not a legal ground, it's that we have made points before that if we had something that was very controversial, that.
Well, it's obviously controversial.
It needed to be on the agenda. But it's like, I agree with Mr. Singleton, this has been discussed a lot, over and over and over, and that, so it's, I don't think this is completely new.
I know, but how, how hard is it to have just, I'm not having meeting after meeting after meeting, but just.
Okay.
Disarm.
Just have one special meeting where we discuss this completely. Is that acceptable? Do we table, table this to a special meeting?
If a majority of the board wants to do that, then that's fine. I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't disagree with that.
Okay.
You might check with the rest, the majority of the board.
Okay, so Commissioner, yes.
You might check with the rest of the majority of the board.
Commissioner Frasch, your opinion?
Can you come back to me, please?
No, you need to. The, the question, the question right now is, do you have a?
I know, I know the question, I know the question. And. Try to keep this PG.
It's hard to do.
Yes, it is. I think something, this, a decision like this needs to be discussed with everybody that is involved, not just the board, the executive director, but everybody that is involved. If you do not involve anybody, you're gonna lose a lot of support, and that's gonna be a lot of support for every other thing that this Northwoodby Parks and Recs is going to do. You do this right here without the consensus of everybody, you are shattering the trust, and you are shattering everything else that we stand for to help people out. That's not what we're here for. We are not here to dissolve things all of a sudden, even though this has been discussed, it has not been discussed since I've been here to dissolve this club. I think it's a special meeting that we need to have with the NWA coaches, the parents of these swimmers, and possibly the swimmers. Get their opinions, see what everybody else is doing, including the people that are, what Commissioner Fort was saying, if the baseball team is not getting funded, we need to have them here, too, to see what their opinion is. If they agree with what the board is doing, and the board agrees, and the NWA agrees right there, then I can see us going forward with this. But we need consensus of everybody that is involved, not just the board.
Well, we have to have about 2,000 or 3,000 kids here, because we're talking not just baseball team, football team, basketball team, tennis team, youth sailing team, and every other youth activity that's out there that does not have.
Which one?
Commissioner Fort, sorry, I, you know, you can't just, we can't go willy-nilly. So are you finished, Commissioner Frasch?
I am finished, yes.
Okay. You haven't been to a lot of board meetings, and it's like, I will tell you, the people that'll show up are all the NWA people, not the other 22,000 to 30,000 other people who don't want to support NWA. So there is no consensus, we don't need a consensus. We, the five of us, are the consensus. We represent a cross-section of the community, and so that's what it is. And people that I talked to do not want to support NWA. Have you read the paper this week?
I have, but I get a question.
Okay, no, sorry, I'm finishing, I'm still talking. It's like, we are the consensus, that's why there's five of us. We are the consensus.
No.
We've, we have had the room filled with NWA people, and they send a lot of revilement and hate my way.
No.
Stop saying, stop interrupting me.
No, they don't.
Yes, they do.
No, they do not.
You have not seen all the emails, so.
Madam Chair, can we?
The emails are public access, I have.
The topic, to get back to the point, the topic was whether or not we're going to vote on this tonight, or a special meeting next week. And once that is handled, we either vote, or we create another, we, we create a special meeting, and we, there shouldn't be additional discussion.
Okay. So the question is, let's just show, let's just do, see if there's a majority. How many people vote in favor of tabling this discussion for a special meeting, date to be determined next week? Signified by raising your hands. Those opposed? Okay. So the ayes have it, we will have a special meeting. Everyone get your calendars out, so we can pick a date. All right, Commissioner Hoffmeyer, what days do you not have baseball, or softball, or whatever it is, Little League?
I'm looking through it here. Are there any, other days that other people aren't available?
Let's start with you, 'cause I know you have, you have evening things more than we do, I believe.
You know, also, as I'm looking through this, you know, I, I think maybe we should offer it up as a, as a workshop like the city does, for the public to have a chance to, to give us feedback, one way or another.
They've given us feedback, they've given us plenty of feedback.
Well, I've only received feedback that supports it thus far then. So I, I mean, these, these 22,000 people that, you know, I, I hope that they would show.
Can we pick a date?
Yeah. Commissioner.
I'm trying, how much, how much, time-wise, how many hours do we think we need? That's part of what I'm.
I don't think I need many hours. First of all, you brought up that this is, this has been going on for years, you keep talking about Bill Walker, that's when it all started. So this hasn't just been going on for a week or two.
Calm down.
It's been going on for years. We cannot, you can continue to gain us.
Sorry, no, we're not gonna, we're just gonna, we have to pick a date. We are, we decided we're gonna meet next week. Pick a date, we're not discussing it anymore, we're just picking a date.
Any day is open for me.
Okay. Again, Commissioner Hoffmeyer, what day is work for you?
What time of day are we thinking?
Evening.
What day is Memorial Day, 29th?
I would not, not a Memorial Day, it's a holiday.
Yeah, one of the lines opened, so far, I was asking.
Oh.
What day of the week is June 1st?
Thursday.
Yeah, it looks like that one wore.
Thursday, Thursday works for you? Thursday works for me. Mr. Singleton? Mr. Frasch?
Good for me, 6:30?
Yeah, 6:30. Director, would you see if we can get the room?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Singleton?
So while we're putting the motions on the table, the corollary or, or following motion to this, I'll just go with, which is, I move that we have the executive director prepare alternatives for a non-competitive swim team program in 2018 for presentation by the September regular meeting.
Okay.
Second.
All right, would you send that wording to the director, and to all of us?
Can we discuss that a little bit, 'cause I just.
No. I guess we have discussed the other one. Okay, so move to interim, Commissioner Hoffmeyer?
Yeah, I just, you know, tied into this, I just wanna mention one thing. The levy being on the August ballot, people will begin voting on that July 1st.
Yes.
That's how much out of time we are.
Yes. Commissioner Fort?
Again, we've been going on for years and years and years, it's not like something can't just come to mind. So this, does that, could you repeat that again?
Sure, it was a motion to have the executive director prepare alternatives for a non-competitive swim team program in 2018, and have him present that to us.
By that definition, I mean, I mean, the baseball and the soccer and all of it, they're competitive. So I would say, I would change it to say, with volunteer coach, or a coach hired and, and funded by the NWA team.
So.
So if they wanna give, if they wanna have a really competitive team and pay for the coach, have at it.
Well, in, in this case, though, so just to, just to clarify, this is intended to be, so this would be a program of the district, that, that would be, and, and so it would be, so typically, typically recreation districts own a program, some swim program, but usually they're recreation programs, right? And so maybe, maybe that's, how about, how about we do this? So it's been moved and seconded, how about we come back with, meaning like, I, I would like to think about it a little bit in terms of how to reword it, I'm not saying that you're wrong, I, you know, perhaps it's a recreation swim team. How about that?
Much like, much like every other youth recreational activity in this district.
All right.
Where they use the ball fields, they, they, they hire their own coach, if they hire a coach, but I don't think many of them do, I think they use the volunteer parent coaches. And they, they actually have to pay, someone have to pay something for the ball fields, they have to pay something for the uniforms, et cetera, et cetera. So they have a monthly cost, like, I've looked at the, the, the baseball team, and they're charging like 40 or 50 bucks a month, and I don't know about basketball, none of the other ones, I haven't looked at it. But so.
So how about?
So, and so they can have their own team, they can coach it however they wanna coach it, they can rent lane hours, just like every other activity uses lane hours, or the high school rents lane hours. But they would be a separate entity from, sorry, from, from the pool, or from the Northwoodby Park and Recreation District.
I, I know we're doing discussion right now, but, or rather, can I, can I clarify?
Yes.
So, so this would be intended to be a program of the district, just like the running club. And so my, my modification would be changing the word "non-competitive" to "recreation swim team." So we, we can come back to it. So we have a motion.
Yeah, yeah, again, I just think in the future, that could be misinterpreted, and, and when the, if the board, if the swim team dominates the board again, they basically will rewrite and redo what they want.
Well.
That's the mean.
Let's talk about it next week. Okay. So do you have anything else? Sorry, I'll come back to you.
No.
All right. I have nothing, do you have anything else? Commissioner Singleton?
I, I just wanted to, to point out that, I, I said this earlier, but I, I think that, I personally do think that we should be out of, of, of this business, and, and so, meaning, I think a recreation program would be fine, but we talk about the levy when people start voting for it, and, and I also know a lot of people who will not, with the, with the current structure, will not vote in favor of the levy, because they are, I, I'm trying to find a nicer way to say it, but they're just tired of feeling like their contribution isn't well-used. And, and so that's, that's a different perspective that then often gets shared here.
Mr. Frasch?
I'd like to see all these people that are so-called against NWA actually attend a meeting, 'cause I've never really seen anybody other than NWA here, other than the baseball teams, but I would like to actually see everybody instead of just NWA, because, to tell you the truth, everybody's voting on this, everybody's gonna contribute to this, so, I mean, yes, we have thousands and thousands of people, but why don't we put fillers out there and say, hey, this is gonna affect everybody, so why not attend this meeting on the 1st of June, and go from there? Instead of saying, hey, it might very well just be dissolved, because a lot of people that are so-called against NWA are not here, that might go on Thursday. But that's just my thought right there. I think it's just gonna, should be discussed with everybody here on Thursday.
Commissioner Hoffmeyer?
Yeah, you know, you know, first of all, you know, I usually, I usually don't mention citizens by name, and, you know, I feel like Bill Walker's a unique example there, just because, or a unique exception, maybe, because he was the, the, the former director, before we had an executive director, he was the former director. And, you know, he did resign, but he has still stayed a part of the community, and he's willing to put his name out there in the paper and come to meetings and stuff, so, you know, up until two meetings ago, I, I thought Bill Walker was a friend, and, you know, I, I, some stuff's down on him, maybe that's not the case. But the biggest reason I keep mentioning the name is, is I've done, I've done public records requests after, I, I, I have, I have asked of you, I haven't personally made a request, but I've asked of you, public records request after public records request, 'cause I keep hearing about these 22,000 people that don't support the levy. Unless I'm remiss and I'm missing something, the, the only, the only public comment that I see that we have, have ever received, in, in the last three years that I've looked over, at least, not supporting this swim club is Bill Walker. So these, these 22,000 people, I don't know where they are. And if I remember back to 2011, the levy was on the August ballot, and it failed, it got way shorter than 63%, like 54 or something. And the NWA team, they formed this, this Save the Pool campaign and website, a website that we're gonna use. NWA created this website that we're gonna use this time even. We are, we are borrowing from what they did in 2011. So barely over 50% support, and NWA goes out and these kids, these 50 to 100 kids at the time, they stood on a street corner with signs, they wore shirts in the parade that said, "Save the Pool." This community, this community supports its children. If that's not evident by a $7 million stadium for 40 kids to play football, I don't know what is. You know, we keep hearing about these baseball fields, and the coaches don't get paid. A coach isn't gonna drown, or a kid's not gonna drown playing baseball. But if we wanna keep bringing up baseball, let's look at that model. The Northwoodby Little League gets seven full-on baseball fields to use per year, all the grounds keeping, taken care of by the city, and the gracious taxpayers, if you will. 10 practice fields, you know, the amount of property that the Northwoodby Little League uses, that the city is nice enough to let us use, you know, it's 20, 30 acres. The Northwoodby Little League, Doc, pays $1 a year to use all of that, $1. If we were gonna let NWA do the same type of thing and not pay for lane fees, then they could do it.
Little League charge you?
Okay, Doc, he's.
So we wanna say, we wanna pick and choose what we want out of baseball or football, but we wanna leave all the shit that we don't like. We wanna say that we want the director to use the Fidalgo model, until we find out that the Fidalgo model is what certain commissioners have said it is all along, and we don't like that either, when in all reality, all we ever wanted, all three commissioners, again, I, I've known you for quite a while, and I think you're better than this. So forgive me for saying three. I, I feel like maybe, I feel like maybe certain commissioners are trying to use others. But anyway, I, I, let me step back from that. I feel like this is all. I feel like this is all a couple of commissioners appointed. You know, the Woodby News Times had a, had a newspaper reporter for a couple of years that grew up here, I can't remember her name, she'd been with Ever Herald for a while. She called me when I decided to run last time. And she asked me why I was running. One of the biggest reasons was the swim lessons and the fact that that has the potential to save untold lives. The number two reason I gave her, and they can go back and look at this, the number two reason I gave her was that I felt two to three commissioners wanted N-WAC to go away. So maybe, you know, there's the, there's the comment of, oh, you know me better than I do. I doubt that's the case. But on this issue, maybe I seemed through something that you didn't. But the fact is, that's what I told the newspaper two years ago and I'm sure they still have that in their file. What's happening here is not right. If we want to use the baseball model of you can use the facility for $1 a year, then let's do it. You know, if we want to use the Fidalgo model, let's do it. You know, Amy Merkley, the high school swim coach, came to us and told us that without N-WAC, we wouldn't have a high school swim team.
Now you're repeating yourself. Wrap it up, please.
There are several people on this board that have repeated themselves for years.
I'm just saying, you're repeating yourself from tonight. So, I'm just saying, please wrap it up. You're not making new points, you're just going on and on. You may not have other things to do tonight, but I do.
This board has to decide what they want to do. They have not given, tonight is the first night we've given our executive director their direction. We beat around the bush for two years. People's intentions have been to just dissolve N-WAC. It's sickening. You know, I would like to sit here and be able to apologize and ask for forgiveness for calling certain individuals horrible people.
Okay.
But it's very accurate.
Yeah, you're repeating yourself. So if you don't have new stuff, we're going to move on.
So I guess what I'm asking is, is do we want to use the baseball model to where it's $1 a year to use the pool? Do we want to use the, the TAP model to where it's paired up with the high school swim team? That's what I'm asking. You know, with the, with the, with the, with the motion that you changed to the last way you put it, we're still asking the director to bring something back to us and I don't think he knows what that is. And I also, we have to realize the cost of this. Why can't it just be tabled until January 1 of 2018? Because as was mentioned, the new board can change it if they want, so let's just...
Because we want the levy, you want, you want an answer to it. You've asked that question. We want the levy to pass, the levy will not pass if N-WAC exists.
Then why did it pass in 2011?
In spite of N-WAC, it got passed.
No, without N-WAC, it failed. No.
Sorry, all right.
No.
It's not a question...
No.
Commissioner Ford.
No, I'm not that.
You are.
No, I'm not.
You have gone into repeating yourself.
And you've repeated yourself for two years that you don't like kids. And the people that you, the people that you talk to...
Shane?
The people, the people that you talk...
No, I'm the chairman, you have, guess what? That means I get to say you are done, yes.
I have a legal right to talk.
You don't, not when you've been going on and on.
The Attorney General says I do.
I don't think so.
Yes.
I'm the chairman, so I get to say you're done.
Quite often. You said the people that you know want to know why in the hell, your words, we pay for children to swim.
When did I say that?
When you first got on the board.
I didn't say that.
No.
Okay, stop.
You said that three months ago.
Stop.
You said that three months ago in a meeting, on the record. You know, when you first got on the board, you, when you first got on the board, a woman that has since deceased, you know, I, I, forgive me that this is going to go on the record, but it was your words. You compared a woman that cared about this district more than anyone to a Saturday Night Live skit and you said, Jane, you ignorant slut. That is not something good people say. And that was on the record and it's not funny.
It is funny because he, that was...
It's not funny. She passed away, she died of cancer. It's not funny.
Okay.
Are you going to, are you going to go to her grave and apologize to her? It's not funny. Hell no you won't, because you're not a good person. You called the public idiots.
Okay.
You said they were insane.
Mr. Hofmeyer? Please, what have we agreed to?
You said the public was insane. You've called them idiots.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not something good people do.
But it's not, it's not the general public, it's, and that was, and it's not a matter of good people.
You said the reason we're here is because we had to get away from the crazy public. That's what you said. You said the reason we're meeting here is because we have to get away from the crazy public. They're not crazy. What they have to say matters. The commissioners don't get to decide the fate of a district. The people do. The majority of 22,000 people get to decide that.
That's right.
So where are these comments? They're not in public records. Where, they don't show up to meetings, where are these people? Are they in your head? Where are these people?
I'll answer that question if you give me a chance.
Okay, don't, don't answer it.
Oh, good, thank you. So now I can call?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's not my call, but I'm there.
Okay, thanks. So here's, first of all, you have been at meetings before I became a board member, where I spoke up against...
Angry.
I am, I'm not being angry, I'm just, I'm loud sometimes.
I'm trying not to be loud.
And you are too.
Absolutely.
And, part of, I guess, our male thing, I'm sorry about that. But you've been at meetings, prior meetings where I stood up as an audience and spoke against, that I did not feel that there should be a full-time, that the swim team should not be, have a coach funded from the M&amp;O levy. I even said that when the coach was hired, he took me out in the hall and explained to me why they couldn't afford a good coach like him if, if they had to pay for it on their own. But, that's, okay, that's that. So this is not, you can't say that they're trying to influence me. I felt this way, I've been consistent about this all along, for years. Number, okay, number two. The, the reason that the vast majority of people out here aren't people who, who are levy taxpayers, who are not N-WAC members, is because the levy rate, like Coach said, it's only $40 or $50 per year, he says, per house, per home. They are paying about $10 of that. So they don't really have an economic incentive other than the unfairness issue of having, having to pay for a coach that they don't get the benefit of. So for $10 a year, they're probably not going to come out to these meetings and put up with this, this kind of harassment. But the N-WAC team members, who benefit to the tune of 600 or so dollars a year per participant, their family members have a big economic incentive to come out and lobby for the, their benefits, you know, this, so that they can get this thing passed and continue getting their $500 or $600 subsidy from the M&amp;O levy annually. And, and so they'll lobby for it and vote for it, yes. So the N-WAC members are going to be the only ones that come out because they have a $600 incentive to come out. Whereas the general public, who's, who is, who are the majority of the voters, they only have like a $10 incentive at max. They're not going to come out. They're not going to come out and put up with this crap, for the most part.
Okay.
So there's the difference.
You done, Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
Commissioner Shingleton, any further comment?
Yes. Okay. One is just because people don't write things onto public record doesn't mean that they haven't expressed their opinions. We all have had cases where that certainly is, is, takes place that people share with us when we see them, talk to them socially or in whatever situation, it doesn't, it actually doesn't matter. But, so, no, not everything will be on public record. Number two, just because someone says something doesn't mean it's true. And the fact is, is that there are, there are documents in public record that refute a lot of what has been said here. And I, I don't feel the need to be detailed about it because there's just no point. So, so the, I guess the third thing is that I thought this was supposed to be a discussion about a non-competitive swim team proposal. We seem to abstain from that and unfortunately, I think the other, one of the other reasons people don't come is because we have a tendency to meander. And...
One name call of the public.
I, I didn't, I didn't interrupt you.
I was interrupted nonetheless.
I didn't interrupt you. And actually, the last time when I asked you to stay on topic, you yelled and cursed at me. So please let me, yes, absolutely. But nonetheless, this is, this is my, this is, okay, this is my time, this is my time to make comments. And, and I haven't, I don't yell at everyone and call them names. And, but again, just, just because people say something doesn't mean it's true. I know it's true. And additionally, I have found in this experience that unsolicited advice is probably better kept to oneself and used for self-improvement. So, I'm done, thank you.
Mr. Frosch.
Okay, so we use the model of N-WAC of using, what, $40 for the, for a year? Vice of people using $10, is that the accurate?
The $40s.
The general public uses, spends $10 of their tax money on whatever, but the N-WAC spends $40. Is that correct, whatever?
That's not what I said.
Explain to me what you're trying to...
Okay, now, all right. Gentlemen, we really are supposed to be on discussion of preparing alternatives for non, the recreation thing. So if it's, if we're back to N-WAC, can we just leave that for next Thursday?
I'm, I'm just...
Yeah, I'll explain it to you Thursday. Just, yeah, okay.
All right.
The question, well, the question I...
Yeah, you didn't understand what I was saying, maybe I didn't say it clearly.
I mean, it, it sounds like to me that the N-WAC is actually, my opinion, my personal opinion, that the N-WAC is actually investing more in their kids than everybody else, like say the baseball teams. They choose to do that. N-WAC is lobbying, okay, we want money to improve our team. That's what I'm hearing right there. Is if somebody wants to improve their team, what are they going to do? They're going to go out and get sponsors, they're going to try to get some grants, some money to improve their team, right? That's what every team wants. That's basic business right there, isn't it? So why is the N-WAC the only ones that are doing that? And the baseball teams and all these other programs, 22,000 people, not doing that? Is it because they don't care about their kids? No. It's because they don't want to come here to deal with this right here? No. Do they have the time? Probably. But all I see here is N-WAC and nobody else. Everybody else, I'm not hearing, I'm just hearing from the board members, hey, I'm getting negative comments about everybody else. Okay. Hey, I'm a board member, where are these comments? Prove to me as a board member that this is negatively impacting everybody else, other than N-WAC. You say 22,000 people, vice 50 people. I hear 50 people saying, yes, I want N-WAC. 22,000 other people, I don't hear about. Doesn't that seem odd to anybody else?
I thought I answered that.
I get that, okay, it's not part of public record. It's not doing anything else right there. I, I work for the, for a couple more months, that is, until I retire. Lot of people I work with have kids. They have programs, they go to soccer, baseball, swim, all this stuff, stuff like that. I don't hear one ounce of problems from anything. And they're freaking military. Come on. Two, three of us have been in the military. We know better than this. We know how screwed up the military can be, moving every two to three years. And when we get rid of programs like this, that dissolve something like this because it's not fair to someone else that has not put in the time for that. To tell you the truth, if I was a kid and I had the ability to swim or baseball that wasn't available for me unless somebody created that program, guess what I would have been doing as a kid? I would have been getting in trouble. This is a small town, right? How many do we have in this town? Couple thousand? 20,000, something like that? Okay, 20,000 people, let's say 20,000 people. 22,000 people with all these people that are in the baseball team. Okay? Small town, what is there to do in Oak Harbor? For kids, what is there to do in Oak Harbor? Tell me one thing, other than baseball, soccer, swimming, any of these other sports teams. What is there to do? Guess what? Why do you think pregnancy rates is high? Just as an example, I'm not saying right there, okay, we got a lot of pregnant over here. I see a lot more over here than, I'm from a big city. Don't see that much over there, I see much here. So if we get rid of some of these programs like this, especially when I was younger, if I didn't have programs up like this, I would have been in trouble, I would have probably been in juvenile detention or whatever. But here I am in the military, 20 years later, retiring because I had an outlet to do something other than just meander and cause trouble. I'm not saying that the N-WAC is the end-all be-all or baseball or soccer or any of these other ones that are funded or non-funded or recreational or whatever is going to relieve that. But when we start limiting options for everything without it being discussed by everybody, not just the board, because I can tell you what right now, three people out of five are going to disapprove this and I guarantee you, next week it's going to get dissolved. I already know that. We're going to have a meeting to discuss it. What is that going to do? It's still going to be denied and it's still going to be dissolved. Why? Because three out of the five commissioners want to do that. I'm wrapping up, so...
Thank you.
I'm getting to my point here. So, we're in June, right, or almost in June. The new board is going to take over here in, what, November? January?
January.
January, okay. So they get elected, okay? Who's going to run for it? I don't know. Not me. I'm not going to be here next year. I'm, I'm done with politics. I've, I've seen it, I've been doing it 20 years in the military. I know what politics is. I see how this is going right here. I don't want to have anything to do with that after this election. But I am here right now and I want to make sure everything is put on the table for everybody knows what is going on, voices of their opinion. And I want to see what the public can do if the board says, okay, we're going to dissolve this or whatever we're going to do. What the public can do, I'm going to task the executive director on what, what the public can do to overturn the, the board's decisions or what they can do to readdress this, other than coming to these meetings. Such as legal actions or anything else like that. Because, to tell you the truth, I'm not here to, whatever it is that, agendas that everybody else has here. I'm here for my agendas. You probably already know what they are. I've got two dogs. I'll tell you outright now. Dog park, I'm here for that. But I'm here for everybody else too. Because my dogs are my kids. Their kids are like my dogs. I want the best for them. I want to make sure everybody gets what they want. Fairly. That's all I have.
I need 60 more seconds.
No, we're, we're going to, we're going to talk about this on Thursday. I know, no.
But this is part of, this is part of this.
You had like 10 minutes.
This is part of this, I would like 60 more seconds.
No, we're done. We're going to have a special meeting on Thursday.
No, because this won't be on the agenda. This won't be on the agenda.
Yes, it will.
What we're going to talk about won't be... 60 seconds.
No.
Yes.
Bring it up, because everything that we just discussed is going to be discussed ad nauseam again.
I haven't discussed what I've discussed yet.
You already had... All right, all right, 30, you got, I know, but... All right, all right, thirty, you got, I know, but I will give you sixty seconds. Go.
So recently, you know, we talked about this support or the lack thereof of this opposition. The Whitman News Times recently did a reader survey that was emailed to each of the five commissioners after it was concluded. Three hundred and seventy-five members of this community supported NWAQ and its current model, and only twenty people opposed that. That was emailed to all five of us. That's part of the public record also. You know, we've talked about the cost of NWAQ to the taxpayer. Jumping off on what commissioner here said, Commissioner Frosch, it costs forty-one thousand dollars a year for the taxpayers to put one kid in jail, and there's nothing else to do in there.
You don't, you don't need to get upset.
It costs forty-one thousand dollars a year to put one kid in jail to the taxpayers. Forty-one thousand dollars. The NWAQ program doesn't cost that much for fifty kids. And you, and you watch the clock, I'm talking just like you did when the public talked.
I am listening, I can do two things at once. You may not be able to, okay, we're done. We will meet next Thursday to discuss those issues. I would like to get a consensus now. What I also want to do is avoid going over and over and over. I would like to limit discussion points to, do we wanna say five minutes per board member? Is that sufficient time to get your point across?
No.
Yes.
You say yes, I say yes. Commissioner Singleton? Mr. Frosch?
I don't know why we're actually voting, because three of you are gonna say yes and two of us say no.
That cannot be legally binding regardless.
I think it can.
No!
I will look it up and be sure, but the consensus is that we're gonna limit discussion because we want over...
And we limit the discussion from the public, we don't listen to a daggone thing, they say, and we don't listen to anything to a commissioner say. Three people are...
We listened, we listened. Okay.
You haven't listened. You've let people talk, but you haven't heard a word they've said.
Just because I don't agree, just because I don't agree with you doesn't mean I didn't listen. I listen.
You listen, but you don't hear.
I do hear it.
No!
I don't happen to agree with you, that's the difference.
But your job's not to agree, your job's to represent the majority of the people.
It's not personal opinion, this is public opinion.
Actually, our job is to represent all the people, not just the majority of the people.
Yes.
Then why are we putting our own opinions in this, and why are we putting our own agendas in this vice what the public wants? As in, the public here, what does the public want here?
The public is gonna get a chance to vote.
Gentlemen, gentlemen.
And the more public will get a chance to vote on this.
Okay, so where are these people?
As they've done in every election cycle.
Yep.
Where are these people that are voting in this room?
Gentlemen, stop, stop. I will look it up to make sure that we have the ability, I'm pretty sure we can, because I'm pretty sure Congress limits the amount of time you get to speak. I think we can do that, because frankly, I don't want to listen to it over and over and over.
Have you watched somebody reading it to him for twenty-four hours? Correct, filibuster.
Yeah.
There's no limit? I can read Dr. Seuss for twenty-four hours, and that would be a lot better to hear than what we've heard out of this place for the last two years. You have destroyed this district.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, next topic, the employee advisory service option. Director.
Okay, so as a refresher, the employee advisory service is a program as voluntary, and we don't have to participate if we don't want to, we can cover whomever we wish, or we don't have to cover anyone at all. What the coverage gives is phone calls, you can call about anything, you can call about having problems in college, if it's a college kid away, or whatever. They do, as part of what we pay, would pay to them, they do cover three physical or not physical, three therapy sessions, so I used to say physical. Then after that, then it's up to the employee if they continue to do that. So the cost is fifteen dollars a year per employee, and it's a two-year contract. So, in discussion with the staff, the belief is, if we, if it's wanted to be kept, that we cover six people, ostensibly the six senior staff. They're the full-time, they're basically the full-time people, but I don't think it, I don't, I don't believe we have to give them names of who we're covering. We just say we're covering six people, and anyone can call and use it. It's doubtful that any of the six there would, six of us would call. So what that would be is, six times fifteen is ninety times two, that would be a hundred and eighty dollars for a two-year contract, is what that would come to, so.
I can't remember, is it in the budget for this year already?
For six hundred dollars, yes.
Oh, for six hundred. Have we already, have we already paid that?
No, it comes up in late June or July.
Was it just for senior staff before it was for...
No, it's for, it was for, they covered, it was at nine hundred dollars before, and it was for like thirty-eight or some odd, some number of people like that.
And we brought it up, I mean, we came up for discussion, I kinda felt like it was a waste, because it wasn't being used. So we, but we agreed to let you poll the staff, and you basically came up with zero. So, if we agree that that's what we're going to do, and it's a zero, and zero people think it's of a benefit, why are we gonna waste a hundred and eighty, or six hundred, or whatever it is, per year?
Well, maybe, and maybe that's, what, Mr. Director, what do you, what do you recommend?
I got zero people to say they would use the program.
But you think that's because they were bashful, or they just didn't know that maybe it would come up, that they would feel the need to have it?
Madam Chair, if I may, so the, my understanding, so we've, we've had a very similar conversation on at least one occasion already. Part of it was, the question that we asked to be addressed was, if we forego it, what then? If there was a crisis? And that, well, that was, I mean, that was, that was the action item, was, was, if you really want to do that, then what do we do? If someone should have a crisis and need help? And, and so I, I think that was, if I can just finish that point, it's simply the fact of, if we want to let it go, I don't think anyone has a problem spending less money, but it's what do we do to ensure the employee care, should it be necessary?
What do all the other public entities do? For example, the city board and the city for, they, they don't have it. So what do they do?
They do have it. That's, at every company I've ever worked for, I've had it. Yeah, so, so for me, it's a, that's, that's part of why I value it, not because I had a use for it, but it was something, it was a benefit I was used to having.
I don't know why we even bother taking the poll, then we should've just voted for it.
Well, no, the, so if I can just readdress, I'm just, all I'm doing is repeating the conversation we've already had, which was, the staff came back and said, we don't think we're gonna use it, you know, we don't foresee using it, and my response to that was, right, people don't usually go, I'm planning to call for employee assistance six times next year.
I guess it depends on how it happens to Obamacare, or whatever.
But, but it was just that there's a plan, and if you feel like, if you feel like you can ha, you have, or would ha, or can create a plan, if you feel like it wouldn't be used, I don't think anyone's gonna say, let's spend the extra money just because. It was just more of a, do we feel like we have a net? That, that's, that was the last discussion that we had about this.
Either we do this, or we do nothing, I don't know what we...
Okay, do I have a motion from anybody on this? Does anyone wanna make a motion?
I move we eliminate the EAS.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we eliminate the EAS. Eliminate. Discussion. Commissioner Frosch.
What legal ramifications is this gonna have if something happens and we don't have these services?
Zero, it's not required, it's not a mandatory service.
Okay, so what is this going to affect for the pool and everybody else? What is this gonna affect? Nobody?
No one. If I go by the poll in which, of the responses we got back, each of the department heads got back and gave to me, zero people felt that they would ever want to use this, or...
I got you, I got you.
...need to use it.
My job right now is, I'm a career counselor. That's my job, and I pretty much counsel a lot of people on a daily basis. You know how many times people say, I don't need help? But when I'm outside, away from everybody, hey, I need help. That's what I'm getting at right there, is, okay, nobody is gonna admit that they need help, because I can tell you right now, Navy has this program, says, hey, you can get help without letting anybody know. You just need to let these people know, it's confidential, they don't have to say anything. Okay? How many people are gonna admit to having a problem or issue or whatever? Nobody, right? So why not have this safety thing, said, if somebody needs it, we have it available for somebody, just for something doesn't happen? What happens if they commit suicide because of that? Because of an issue? What is that gonna affect? It's gonna affect their family. Hey, you're down a worker, but we can replace a worker, right? We can't replace a person. Why not have something like this for some counseling services? Can we put price on life on it? No. A hundred and eighty bucks for two years? That's freaking change! That's a dollar or so a month, but two dollars a month, isn't it? Something like that, a hundred and eighty bucks. Come on, that's services that is needed. I think it's man, it should be mandatory for services like this. I'm lucky I have these services available. If I go in a civilian world right now, if I don't have these services, something happens to me, that's gonna cause issues for everybody that is around me, friends, family, everybody, because I did not have services. A hundred and eighty bucks, what do you freaking do? Pass the hundred and eighty bill for six people to get help. It's better than six hundred dollars that we originally put in the budget, right? A hundred and eighty bucks, come on.
Why isn't it just six people? Why doesn't it be the entire staff?
I'm not, it isn't the entire staff, six people can use it. How many people of the staff, how many staff do we have?
Fifty-ish.
Fifty staff members, okay. Have you heard of fifty people having life crises in two years? Except for the military, I don't hear, I don't hear that, anything from that. Come on, we're dealing with people's freaking lives here. A hundred and eighty bucks for six counseling sessions. I get it for free, from the Navy. Six. Six people.
Mr. Ford?
Six staff members, right? Six counseling sessions, right?
Doesn't matter.
The counseling staff, they can call as often as they want. If they wanna see someone in person, they get three.
Okay, so three, still, that's three out of fifty. Can we afford to lose three people out of a fucking community? Pardon my language, keep them down. Yes.
So...
No, stop.
Well, because it's only six staff members right now. If it was fifty, how much would it cost? You said it's how much per person?
Fifty, fifteen, so it'd be seven...
Fifteen times fifty would be how much?
Seven hundred and fifty.
Huh?
Seven hundred and fifty.
Okay, so it's seven hundred and fifty for the entire staff. Why are we gonna just limit, if we're gonna use your argument, why are we just gonna limit to those six people? Let's give it to everybody, because it's the, it's the younger people, probably gonna need it more than me.
Gentlemen, stop.
He said he could work it to whoever needs it, can't get it that, right? Doesn't have to be six staff members, it could be the fifty people, right? Out of these fifty people, we can do three of these counseling sessions, right?
He said it was, they don't have to name names until they, I guess they get the first six, and then we'll have to decide, yes.
Oh, I thought he was limiting it just to full-time.
I'd like to say full-time, yeah. I'm using that as a representative number to count.
Oh, okay.
He, okay, three counseling's for two years, a hundred and eighty for fifty people. I think that's a good, that right there.
Well, it's not for a hundred and fifty people, it's for six people, but it's...
For fifty people for the whole pool, right there, he's, the executive director said, anybody, am I correct on saying that, anybody of the fifty people can do the three counseling, right?
Anyone can use it. I just, I just picked a number of people that I would say we're covering six people.
Right, yeah, but you mentioned, yes.
So with that clarification, I'd like to have amendment on that to keep this, because now, out of fifty people that are in the pool, that work for the pool, we have three people to use counseling sessions right there, for a hundred and eighty bucks for two years. That's a drop in the bucket for three lives. Come on.
You can't, the motion on the table, I'm sorry, I know I'm speaking out of turn, but the motion on the table is to eliminate it.
I like to amend my move.
Do you wanna rescind it?
Yeah, I wanna rescind it.
Okay.
It's not worth, it's not worth the effort we're going through here.
Okay, the motion to limit EAS has been rescinded.
I wish we'd done this three months ago, rather than making the poll.
Do we have, do we have a motion on EAS to retain it?
I motion that we retain it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we retain the EAS as the director described it. Any further discussion on this?
Well, that wasn't the motion, I mean, I just wanna be clear, so the motion was just that we retain it.
Okay.
If we want, I mean, for specificity reasons, if we want to do it based on that, that six, then we need to include that in the motion. Shouldn't be that difficult.
Okay, I'd like to amend the motion, I amend the motion to include what the executive director had for the counseling sessions, the three counseling sessions.
That's just the, that's the service.
Okay, six individuals, doesn't matter who individuals are, to have counseling sessions.
Don't make the motion really complicated, just say, per the executive director's recommendation.
How would you recommend, Swerden?
I would recommend letting me verify that anyone can use it, if I only sign up for six, that people can use it. I would like to verify that and bring that back next month.
Okay, all right, let's do that, okay.
I believe that's the case.
So six per year, six people per year could use it, any six people per year.
Commissioner Singleton?
Can, can, can we just go ahead and finish this motion pending, so pending his verification? Can we do that?
Pending, yeah, okay, I amended my motion to accept the...
Retain EAS.
To retain the EAS as per the executive director's verification.
Recommendation pending his verification.
Pending his verification, yes.
Is that, that's, do you feel comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't, I don't wanna feel defeated, right?
No, no, no.
So is there a second on the amended motion? Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we retain the EAS per the executive director's recommendation, pending verification of what he said. Do we need any further discussion?
Yes, I just want, the verification I want is, is it's six, up to six people per year, any six people out of the staff, per year, for three sessions, and unlimited telephone.
I will find out what the coverage covers. If I say we're covering five people, what does that mean?
Yes, five people out of the entire staff, I mean, five uses out of the entire staff, is basically what you're saying. Not five people.
That's what I'm gonna say, if I'm, well, I'm covering, I'm covering people, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna verify, if I'm saying we're covering five people, what are the rules then?
Right, yeah, right.
That's what I will verify.
Okay, so I said the motion, and the second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Is that an aye, Commissioner Hofmeyer?
Yes.
Okay, and the chair also votes aye, unanimous. Next topic. Commissioner, or sorry, Mr. Director, how long do we have the room?
For another thirty minutes.
Okay, till nine o'clock, so we're gonna go very fast. Employee manual is tabled, correct?
That's what you were gonna recommend.
We're gonna table the employee manual, because I don't think most people read it. Comprehensive maintenance plan. Did, um, did you get comments from...
I got some comments from a couple of you. I can address those comments now, or if you want, how do you wanna... Okay, all right, so you, so I've got, I've got Matt here to help me out there. So I just took the, basically the glossary and went down, and I went in where the comments were. The first comments come in the equipment related to pageant sake, there were, there were two comments there.
What page are you on? Sorry.
Uh, I don't, I don't have one of those in front of me. Uh, page four. So page four, I had two questions on that one there. The first one was the pool filtration system, the original, so I, and I think that came from you, Commissioner, we don't, I don't know what the, we can't find what the original cost of the system is.
Understood.
So, so that's why, your question was, do we not know? We don't have, we can't find the original records. We replace the filters as they come available, but if we were to replace the entire system in there, our estimate is it's twelve thousand dollars, which is what we have in mind.
Okay, but do you, do you not know how long something like that should last, or it's one of those things, it's like fifty years, or twenty years, or...
Well, on those, they, they change, they vary. We change them as they break. There is no set time on how long they last.
The filters themselves?
It can, it can vary by chemicals I use, how much I use, how low I keep it, the temperature of the pool, that, that's a big variation, that changes everything. And so, where we keep it right now for the last five years, it's, it should last indefinitely.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, but they're, you know, they do break, they break.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
They're paper, correct? No, they are not. Okay. They are plastic with a nylon cover sleeve. Okay, thank you.
And they're clean frequently.
Yeah, I know that, yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, if you wanna see Matt in a bathing suit, just come on in, when he goes filtered out.
I just, I just was assuming they were, because...
If he goes down, on the, into the filter, into the filter, don't...
Yeah, I'd like to come see that.
Okay, so, the next one, uh, this, Commissioner Ford, this came from you, it was the, uh, the potential contaminated water from the roof. It's actually, that's, in our, that's not actually a specific item in our view, that's just a function of the roof leaking. And when, and, and we get eight, uh, water checks a year, four by the state, four by the county, and we never, we have...
I know, but still, that's, that's bird poop up there and, and nests and so on and so forth, if this stuff is... But it's not coming through into the pool. Yes, it does, I've been on, I've been there, he talks about the shower that I get, right? She wants to charge me for it, it's been dripping along lane one when I've slammed there. When it flows the right way. That, that is just water. Where the bird, uh, feces and all that is. Well, but I thought we were gonna fix that anyway, you talked about, I mean, in part in the maintenance plan, we were talking about 10 gallons or so, should be able to correct that. So, that's all I'm saying, is let's put, let's do that, put that right in here and get that as, as one of the first things we need to do. Then we don't need to completely cover the roof, but we, let's just stop the leaking for God's sake.
Well, that's what we're gonna do as soon as...
Okay, that's all I'm saying. We could need a hot enough day, and it needs to be, it needs to be long enough with no rain. And I'm just saying, I think it's dissolved, it needs to be moved up front as to something that needs to be done in the next two or three months in the, during a dry spell, which is coming up.
Then I'm gonna ask, we don't feel that that's a, that's a function of the roof and getting it sealed, which is in a different section. If that, if the majority of the board wants me to do that, then I'd be glad to do it.
If you're going to do that, if that's planned to be done in the next two or three months, we don't even need to discuss it further.
Whenever we get three dry, actually, once we get the temperature up...
Wait till July, when you know you're gonna have a bunch of dry.
Yeah, that, that's the plan.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying.
All right, good. All right, okay, uh, the next one is in, uh, let me find the page number here. I'm moving into section three, so it's gonna be on page five. Main pool liner and the wading liner, uh, those prices are current estimates.
Okay.
We haven't gone out and done that, yes. Um, we're, this summer, we're not shutting down and draining the pool, because it stayed pretty well.
But we don't, we just, we've been patching them all along, correct? And it's like, aren't we just gonna continue to patch? Is there gonna come a time when it's like we actually need to, I don't know what you do, do you read?
There will, there will become a time that we will need to actually close the pool down, totally rebound and put in new liners.
Okay, is a liner just like, not very thick, is that...
Than that, they're, they're, you know... Are they sprayed on, or what? Yes, they are sprayed on.
Okay.
Dog pool party. Before you drain.
So, but we don't, but right now, we don't know, it's, it's somewhere...
Next summer, next summer, we, our plan is a three week, basically a three week shutdown, uh, late in the summer to...
Patch and repair.
To patch and repair the stuff and repaint.
But the replacing is far off in the future somewhere.
Until we actually have to do it, we don't wanna do it, as long as...
And that totally makes sense.
Okay. All right, next is section four, but let me get to the...
Can I, can I go back to that one, please?
Yes.
Sorry, just, how, how do you know then when it needs to be done? What, what's the indicator?
Um, it starts cracking, and then we start losing a lot more water, which will cost us more. And then, of course, more water equals, I need more chemicals and a lot of other things will go up.
Okay, I just wanted to understand what's the tipping point? There it is, thank you.
Okay, so on page six, it's the, the roof, uh, well, it's, yeah, is that a guess? Yes, it is a guess on that, but it's an estimate based on 110K for the, uh, flat, for the metal roof, and 90K if we would replace the other roof there. Until we can actually find a roof of it'll come out and, and give us something, then this is as close as an estimate as we can come to what the, what it takes for the roof.
Okay.
Okay, um, your next question, this is, actually, all the rest of these are from Commissioner Holly. Uh, the main boiler, yeah, the main boiler appears to have failed at 12 years, so that, if that was your question on page, uh, yeah, that was on the same page.
Yeah, so if they're supposed to last for 25 to 35, but our original one failed at 12?
Well, I think part of that, go ahead, I'll let him.
Because of the pool chemicals at the time, they were higher, and they, they had more alkalinity in them. The more alkalinity brings more acid, acid eats metal, boom. And that's, that's the reason, keeping the pool chemical at, at, you know, at, at, in the center, at, at best, best place, it, it saves everything. You get them out of whack, one way or another, if they're real high or real low, certain things will start happening.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Holly, just, I, all the grammatical things, I just incorporated those, so you know, I'm not addressing those.
Yeah, that's, I got that, you circled them, so it, it indicates to me you did them.
Okay, um, main boiler vent system, that, your question was, have we done this, or is it being done? It was done in January.
I just couldn't remember.
Yeah.
So, okay. Oh, was that the one that we went down like several weeks?
No, we were shut down for the pump, right, at Christmas, but during that, they found that the vent system was bad, and so that's when we replaced it.
Okay.
Uh, the diving platforms...
I just didn't know what they, are they on, at the pool? I don't remember seeing them.
Those are, those are the starting blocks that the, that the kids jump off on.
Do they sit there all the time, or...
No, they're out there, right, those white things at the end of the pool that the, they dive, the competitive...
Oh, they're on the diving, okay, all right.
They're beside the diving pool, inside.
I don't, I just never go to that end. Okay, thank you, sorry.
Let me get to that, let me find where the vehicles are now. There we go, on page eight, um, vehicles, uh, what are the vehicles used for? Uh, well, anything that Matt has to do during the day for business to go somewhere, he uses a vehicle.
Okay.
It's used to pick up the, um, trash out of Clover Valley as well, and, uh, one of the vehicles is, um, just been configured so that, um, the kayak guy can tow the kayak trailers down to the water.
Okay. I knew that, I knew one was being used for the kayaks, I just was like, I thought we weren't using it, but if you're using it, okay, got it.
Okay, next one would go to section five, uh, additional facility resources, oh, there was, I'm sorry, section six. Um, your question, I'm not sure what page it was on, but there was one question about if logs were kept.
Yeah.
They're kept at his desk.
Okay.
That's where I kept them.
But my comment was that it's not in writing, and you, I think you need to put it in writing, that, that's where they're kept.
Okay. I can do that. Um, your next one was doors and hardware.
Cause you had a checklist for, um, the automatic doors, and then this looked like it was a total repeat, that was all.
No, because we, the only automatic doors are the two that are on the left as you come in the mail door.
For heating, yeah.
All the rest are manual doors.
Okay.
So they're just, it, really, I think the main difference there is just the action, the automatic actuators, which are turned off at night and then turned back on in the morning, or turned off if we want them off.
Cause, um, the very first thing under doors and hardware, automatic closure operation must open, okay.
I caught that one.
All right.
Good catch on there. Okay, um, gas, the, the next one was the gas connections, let me find that for you. Oh, yeah, it's on, it's on page 14, right, first thing under monthly.
Yeah.
Um, yes, we do have a handheld gas.
Okay.
Combustible, or combustible gas detector, so we do have one of those. Um, restaurants, I think that's just right down below it.
Yes, I recommended that we do those, that checklist, um, weekly, because that has to do with safety and cleanliness, but, you know, and it's just a matter of kinda checking up on the cleaners, in my opinion, was what I thought.
I do that every morning when I come in.
See, I thought you did.
Yeah, I do that every morning when I come in, I check my guys' work, make sure they have done everything they needed to.
So, yeah, anything around safety or sanitation is checked daily anyway.
Okay, I, I would go ahead and separate this out there, cause some of it, you are doing daily, and it's like some of it is, yeah, fire, the fire checks, they can probably be done monthly, I would, I don't know. Just give that some thought, as to whether, it's something you're already doing daily, say it's daily. But if, is it something, can we, can we let it go if, if it has to do with safety? Can that be something that we let go? That it's, if it goes bad?
If, it sounds like what you're asking, if I'm not missing it, is how, how are we, do we need to have something in here that says, "He's checking behind his guys daily"? Is that one?
Yeah, the only problem with that, I mean, what if he misses a day? So, I mean, if we make it daily, that's kinda...
Okay.
If I, if I miss a day, usually my assistant is there to do the same thing. Yeah, usually, but I, and I can imagine when they're, so if we make it daily, we're gonna really tie your hands. No, I already do it daily. They were gonna be at default for not doing it daily, if somebody, somebody misses it daily. If you're comfortable with it, then I'm comfortable with it. If you think you can do it daily, if we can do it daily, okay. All right.
If, and I was, I just said, it seems like this is something that could be done fairly quickly, I thought it should be done weekly, not monthly, because that has to do with safety and sanitation, but...
If he's comfortable with it, I'm comfortable with it.
If you guys, you guys don't know how to do it, so...
My checklist, I go in right over the checklist and... Okay, and if you're not there, then your assistant does it, and so it's covered every day, 365. Yep. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, uh, all right. Uh, your question about the floor conditions, other than the stain, we can't do anything else about the staining until we replace the carpet, but yeah, we do check it to make sure that...
I know, but that's the ugliest, nastiest carpet, and it needs to be replaced.
Can, can we just do a time check?
Sorry.
It's quarter of, I just, I, I just want us to, if there's something else, I, I don't know what the protocol is, but I just want us to not run out of time and not have something that needs to be covered.
You haven't seen my carpet home?
We can... Okay, actually, um, can, let's just, apparently, um, did the doc have any other comments that he wanted?
No, not for this.
And nobody else had any comments, other than me, and most of, some of mine were just, uh, you know. Um, so, can we have a motion from the floor, or the board, on the comprehensive maintenance
And we accept the comprehensive maintenance plan.
Do you have a second?
Second.
It's moving to second that we accept the comprehensive maintenance plan. Any discussion?
I think, you know, um, here we are, knowing we have 10 minutes to get out of a building, and it's the reason I didn't inquire on anything. Um, I, I'd like to see it brought back to a future meeting, myself.
Do you have questions or comments on it?
There's lots of questions I have, but with the way the nights went, knowing we have 10 minutes left to get out of here, and knowing that if we don't figure out the ballot title thing, we've got huge problems, and knowing that if we don't figure out where our next meeting is, we have huge problems.
Okay, we will table this to the next meeting.
Did you give anything to the director?
Over the last two years, probably.
No, no.
No, no, on this...
On this, he, we're supposed to have given stuff, but we didn't have to bring this up at the meeting.
Can we please focus on the, he, he's asking to table it, either we choose to or we don't, and I, I concur.
You wanna table it?
I, I would prefer that we did.
Okay. I don't mind, Commissioner Frosch?
Table what?
All right, we're gonna table that to the next meeting, that's fine. Running club update?
Uh, the first one was canceled, we didn't have enough people signed up, it's gonna, we're planning to start again July 11th, so we'll, we'll keep running on that.
Okay, ballot title, I received an email, I don't know if anyone else saw it, we received an email, they changed our ballot title. Um, remember, we had North Woodby Park and Rec District Recreation Program Maintenance and Operation Levy, and we specifically put in John Vanersite Pool, um, Off Leash Dog Park, and Ballfields or something. They changed it, they took out our extra stuff. And so, we have the option to appeal this to the Superior Court, um, and say, explain why we wanted to include those words in it. I put in a call to, we have 10 days from the 23rd of May, so we have until early June, I wrote down somewhere. Um, I had put in a call to the prosecutor who did that to see whether he did it for a legal reason, or just because they wanna make it shorter. And so, um, what I would like to do, well, find out from everybody what you think, do we go with it, the short title that we already said, we wanted pool and, um, off leash dog park to be in the title, so that people knew what we were talking about, and don't get confused by North Woodby Park and Recreation District. Yes?
I, I, I would like to appeal it. I think we should be very cognizant and not let the cost go very far, which I don't think it will, because, you know, time is of the essence. Um, but win, lose, or draw, I think we get our message out of what we are, myself.
You mean by including pool in it?
Yeah, I think, you know, us appealing it, I, I assume we'd get some press coverage, and whether they agree to let us change it or not, I, I think the message that we're trying to convey of what we are, will get out there one way or another if we appeal it.
Okay, um, do we have a, kind of a consensus that we, we should appeal? I think we should.
I think we should.
Is there any jeopardy to doing so, or not?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna check and make sure it's not, you know, for a legal reason. I don't, the only, the only, it's not jeopardy, but, um, uh, Ken and I talked about it, we'll go ahead and come up with the words for the appeal, if you guys don't mind, because we need to do it sooner. We'll have the lawyer check it, so it's gonna cost us a little bit, then I'll find out if we can just actually take it to court and say, "We want it this way because it explains it better who we are," then, you know. But if, if there's a legal reason, then, you know, why rail against the system? But if it's not a legal reason, I would like to do that, if you guys don't have a problem with it. if you guys don't have a problem with it. Okay. All right, we will do that then, and we will send you emails as we're going along. All right.
Can I, sorry, I, I mean, if we're saying this, I, I think the thing that I just didn't get out of this is understanding why it's a problem.
Why what's the problem?
They didn't specify. Okay, that's, I, I'm sorry. Why is this an issue?
Yeah, they did not tell us. They just cut, and that's why I was gonna go and ask if there was a legal reason, or it's a, this is the way you want it.
I thought we was missing something.
Yeah. No, 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 that's why I put in a call to the prosecutor, but he was not available. I'm gonna talk to him on Tuesday.
Sorry, it just, there's a certain tone when you use words like prosecutor that.
Oh, that's, that's.
Very concerning. If you think about that, it's like, whoa.
It goes to the county prosecutor after we submit it, and they review it for legality or whatever.
Thank you. It's, it, it just helped me understand better. Thank you, sorry.
And the, the one thing he did was cut out our, you know, the thing that we had in parentheses, so. All right, new business. Meeting location for the remainder of 2017. Commissioner Frosch, you wanted to bring this up.
No.
There.
Was it me or was it Commissioner?
It was you.
I wanted to bring it up as well. I think legally, we all thought we had to bring it up at some point, being that more money was incurred and stuff.
I think that we should have the general meeting, that the public has opinion or comments over there. Uh, in an area like this, I agree with, somewhat agree with that, but the special meetings we could have at the location at the pool, because, tell you the truth, no public comments, and we could get down to business. There's no real issues with us, except for what the board does to each other. So, that's just my personal opinion.
Um, I, I am not at a point where I'm willing to have a meeting that the public is at, in that, that room. I feel, uh, vulnerable, to be frank, and I, I've told you that. I will let you know when that changes. It hasn't changed yet.
I think it works for discussion.
Oh, it does? Commissioner Hoffmar?
I think that the, the time constraints are one of the biggest issues, um, and then you look at the, the amount of money. Just if we, if we continue to have an average of two meetings a month, which I think is a pretty fair assumption off of the last couple of years, the amount of money we're gonna spend on a facility that we don't need, on a facility that we already have at our pool, you know, this, I, I felt that this is a misappropriation of tax dollars, and should quite possibly legally be questioned. Paying for something that we already have, but doesn't, it doesn't seem right. The amount of money that we would spend using this place twice a month surpasses that of the entire budget for the entire North Woodby, or the entire Clover Valley Park.
And I agree with that.
Surpasses the entire amount of money that we've allocated for the Clover Valley Park.
Okay.
We, we, you know, what I would say is, I do think this merits more discussion. You know, I think that, you know, I, I think it would be worthwhile bringing a, you know, a defense expert, or the Oak Harbor Police Chief or somebody, and then telling us how on earth we are any safer here, if not less safer, because at the pool, we have a room that we can go and lock the door and call.
Wait seven minutes.
Call nine-one-one if we needed to.
Sorry.
And that's back to the technicals being an issue, I feel. We have nowhere to go in here, and there's no way we're safer in here. And to, to expand an amount of dollars that surpasses an entire park that serves thousands of people within the community. I, I was at the Clover Valley Park here about, about a month and a half ago. There were five school buses full of children there playing a baseball game. The dog park had, I'm trying not to exaggerate, but I bet you the dog park had sixty people in it. You know, there was thirty cars at the dog park. I'd never seen such a thing. There must have been four hundred people there. And to say that the, the comfort, the, the false comfort for, for a couple individuals is worth spending more money than we spent on all of that, I just, I, I say no way. You know, we're gonna nickel and dime, you know, senior staff, and when they spend a hundred dollars, or fifty-six dollars, or whatever it was, at the, the elementary schools trying to recruit children to come to the pool, to bring in revenue, we accuse the senior staff and the director of patronizing the children of this district. So, I'll stop there. I have a lot more to say, but time is obviously of, of an issue while using this facility as is for money.
Commissioner Ford?
As long as there's a commissioner who doesn't feel comfortable in any place other than this, I support coming here.
Thank you.
What do we do with that person's on the?
Start, stop, Commissioner Singleton?
Um, I, I, as well, I, I don't feel comfortable, um, and, um, you know, there, there are lots of debatable points that have been said in the past five minutes. There's not a point in debating them. Um, that's, that's how I feel.
And I think Mr. Frosch has had his comment. So, apparently, I, no.
A little bit more?
No, you already had your comment, and we are, we are very short of time. About four minutes to get through. I know.
Since I've been a commissioner, I've never had the police called since I've had a meeting, but here, the last two meetings, I had the police over here. What's going on with this room vice the other room, when we could call the police.
You weren't there for that meeting.
Yeah, you need to listen to the minutes on the eighteenth of April.
But I was here for the last two meetings, and we called the police on the last two meetings. So, we called the police.
The police have been present for every meeting since we left the pool.
Okay, I get that, and that's forty dollars per hour, right?
You are incorrect, but.
No, I'm not.
Yes, you are.
The last two meetings that we had, forty dollars per hour.
Next topic. December meeting date.
He was still talking.
I know, but he already had his chance. December meeting date.
Says what?
December, you know what? We got three minutes. December meeting date. December meeting date.
Okay, um, they can't, we can't have this room on the twenty-eighth, which is when you, when the board agreed to have it, when you voted beginning of the year of having it on December twenty-eighth. Right now, it's available either Wednesday the twentieth, or Thursday the twenty-first at six-thirty, assuming, uh, she was gonna hold it until we had this meeting. I'm hoping she was able to.
Wednesday twenty, December, or what was the other one?
Thursday the twenty-first.
Okay.
Does it take a four-fifths vote to change our agreed-to, uh, regular meetings?
Uh, I don't know your, my understanding is it does.
As we pass our schedule, when we pass our, you know, bylaws for the year?
We don't pass any of the bylaws, but our, our, I'm not sure.
I think it would be three-fifths. I don't know why it'd be four-fifths.
Yeah, it's three-fifths. Um, so does anyone have, does anyone have a preference over Wednesday the twentieth or Thursday the twenty-first? Uh, how about Thursday the twenty-first of December, then? So we have it, keep it at a normal Thursday.
So.
Will we need to, will we need to swear in new commissioners in that meeting as well?
Uh, no, the, well, those that aren't sworn in by the auditor, then the, yeah, they would have to be sworn in.
There would be new board members present for that, potentially, if there was an appointment, et cetera.
Yes, there would be.
Okay.
That's why we believe they.
Not unlike what happened to us, 'cause that meeting was rescheduled also.
Okay, so if no one has, let's just go with Thursday the twenty-first of December. Summer pool schedule, we're gonna, um, has anyone, everyone had a chance to look at it?
We don't vote on it anyway.
I know, so. They got, they got handed out, and what did you wanna say about the schedule?
Well, I can, I'll run, I mean, there are changes, uh, and through it, but to go through them, I won't be able to do it in the time. I mean, but the changes are mostly in the morning.
Yeah, since we're not voting, let's go ahead and table that, and we'll bring it up first thing, even though it's the June meeting, but we'll, we'll just table that too, then.
Okay, but it goes into effect prior to that, Commissioner, so.
That's true.
Can I just execute it as?
Yes.
Okay, and then we'll cover what the changes are at the end meeting?
Nobody had a, anyone who had a chance to look at it, do you have, I didn't have a problem with it, so. Did anyone else look at it, and, okay.
Okay.
Um, staff reports, did anyone have questions on the staff reports?
We do, we probably follow up, and it's really safe.
Yeah, okay, finally. Um, okay, we don't really have time for final board comments, that's fine. Next meeting will be Thursday, June twenty, oh, sorry, next meeting will be next week.
I don't think it's fine, but it is what it is.
It, yeah. And then the next meeting after that will be Thursday, June twenty-second at six-thirty. So next Thursday at six-thirty P.M. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Should I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
It's moving a second, we adjourn. All those favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And chair agrees, unanimous approval, adjourned at nine P.M.
Commissioner Frosch, Commissioner Hoffmar, thank you for looking at what you were just gonna do.